Mayor Olson, I just so you know, I have Luke trying to get ahold of Tom. He's freezing up, so I hopefully he'll join us, but he keeps joining us.
Sounds good.
Again, so.
All right, welcome everyone. I call the December fifteenth Bothell 2020 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge the remote meeting format. Proclamation twenty dash twenty-eight regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign-up sheets were provided by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection will be. If their connection, if a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, their connection will be terminated. For our phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing, so everyone can follow along. For any staff or anyone that's trying to get into the meeting and is needing a code, the code is zero zero five two zero two. So at this point, we'll take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember McCullough.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Dorr.
Here.
Councilmember Agnew, we know he's here. He's having technical difficulties right now.
Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some of the meeting guidelines. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're streaming live video, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. If you want to speak, please indicate by holding up the yellow speaker card in the lower portion of your screen and I'll call on you. This helps prevent two people from speaking at the same time. All right, our first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Deputy Mayor Zorn.
I wanted, we're not at the point of the consent, are we? Because I'd like to pull an item off the consent agenda.
Which item would you like to pull?
I would like to pull AB twenty-one seven-two.
All right, the approval of professional services supplement number one.
Right, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Dewer.
I'd like to pull AB one sixty-five.
So the approval of third quarter financial report?
Yeah.
All right. All right, on to seeing no others. Okay, on to our next item. We have a. See. Proclamation for the recognition of the City of Bothell staff. So whereas twenty twenty started with great optimism in an inspiring list of projects and service delivered to deliver to our Bothell community. One second, my screen changed. To our Bothell community and whereas everything changed in March twenty twenty when COVID nineteen arrived in Kirkland, which became the epicenter of the COVID nineteen outbreak for the United States. And whereas the City of Bothell immediately activated the Emergency Communications Center, one of the very first in the United States, and the mayor declared a state of emergency on March fifth twenty twenty. And whereas the Emergency Communications Center has remained activated, continuing our response and ultimate recovery from the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas the Bothell staff worked and worked with great skill, compassion for the community and unwavering professionalism to protect our community, provide valuable information, support our businesses, and transition over two hundred staff to teleworking conditions. And whereas during the COVID nineteen crisis, Bothell staff, Bothell staff has continued to deliver exceptional service to our community while finding innovative and efficient ways to overcome hurdles and challenges created by the pandemic. Whereas staff has remained steadfastly committed to our values of delivering exceptional customer service, working together as a team, ensuring our employees and community are safe, seeking innovative solutions, and doing all this ethically and inclusively. Now therefore, I, Liam Olson, Mayor of Bothell, do hereby proclaim the City of Bothell's recognition to all City of Bothell employees and extend the City Council's appreciation for each and every employee's commitment, dedication, and determination to serve our community to the very best of our abilities. Deputy Mayor Zorn.
I don't know if this is an appropriate place to add. It's, I appreciate this proclamation because I have been reflecting, like a lot of us have on twenty twenty and how much it's impacted us. And the pandemic has hit the city on so many levels in its function and how it executes itself from, can we go to a playground? Can we get access to city services? How do we, how do we provide city services? And I think our city had more on its place than most cities have because we had two officers who were profoundly dear to us. One that we've lost and it, I, I was down at City Hall frequently and I saw staff coming in and out of the building trying to function and do their job and still be impacted by what a hard loss this was, as well as being sensitive to the people of Bothell and what the people of Bothell need. And so I don't think we can praise our staff too much on all spectrums for rising to a very difficult, difficult twenty twenty. Their finances were impacted like our finances were impacted. Their course of normal life was impacted. And, and, and we had to go beyond hardship and who, who knows? I think we all have stories of people that we know and love that have been impacted trying to survive COVID. So hats off and I, if I could give you a hug, I don't know how to meaningfully put words to how valuable you are to council and to the city. So my many, many thanks to all of our staff that calls Bothell Place to Work and, and in many ways home.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Not often we get to say thank you and this proclamation is pretty fitting this year. We've all had to go through many personal and professional struggles with the pandemic and just whatever we've had to go through this year, twenty twenty is, is one for the record books. But serving on many regional community committees and learning from other leaders around the region on some of the things that their cities are going through and struggles that they're having, I've learned just how good Bothell is. And the, the three hundred and sixty-plus men and women that serve Bothell, I can't list every position that we have at the City of Bothell, but you know, Deputy Mayor Zorn's brought up the Police Department, the Fire Department, Public Works, everybody within City Hall, again, can't name them all, but haven't missed a beat in, in my view. And, and talking to residents around the community, talking to leaders around the community, the, the work. And the workload and the conditions of the workload that, that, that city staff has had to go through is unprecedented. And I personally want to thank the city manager and the city staff for all the amazing work that they've done this year, throughout the entire year. The men and women who, who serve us truly make Bothell great. And we as a, as a council, we have the pleasure of having, to me, what I consider one of the finest city staffs in our region. And they make Bothell feel like it's a sense of community. So I wanted to, to say thank you. It's so fitting that we're doing this proclamation towards the end of the year. But there's, you know, there's still a few days left in this year. But my heart goes out to, to every single city staff member and city manager for your incredible work that you've done for us, the citizens of Bothell. So thank you and happy holidays to all of you.
I'll just say a few words. We hear so much about the emergency services, the essential workers. I really have come to realize how and what the essential services that the city provide, the city provides so many of the services that we need for our day-to-day lives or helps with, you know, water, sewer, power, communications, really the, the day-to-day lifelines that we have. And just so many of the city staff are making those essential needs continue, make it items that we don't have to worry about. We don't have to worry about how we're going to get these essential needs from our, our city. So it's, it's one less thing that we have to worry about as Bothell residents is, is the small things that we take for granted. So I really thank the entire city staff for all of their efforts during this time. We, we keep talking about how we miss each other and it's, it's the same for the staff. They were all, or so many of them were in the City Hall and working and seeing each other, you know, it's their work family and, and they're, they're going through the same things that we're going through as a council, just having to see each other virtually. So I feel for them and they're, they're doing a great job and you know, just, just keep it up. We all appreciate it. Councilmember Dewer.
Thank you, Mayor. I particularly wanted to thank the IT department for, for doing the impossible and getting us all online in very short order. The Parks Department, which is now extremely short-staffed, that continues to take care of our parks and hold it together. And everyone that's been involved in having to kind of mull and innovate and find creative ways to make things work. Hopefully this will make us stronger as a team and help our community come together as we rebuild. So thank you all and happy holidays.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I really just want to add a few more words. So many good words have been said. For all of us, this is unprecedented. But you know, we make it through it because we keep our spirits up and our staff has kept their spirits up. They're always courteous, always helpful. And even when their families are stressed, they still continue to be kind and to be helpful to all of us and to the people of our community. I also want to thank our city manager who, as, as, as hard as this all is, always still has a smile for all of us. So thank you all.
All right. Move on to our next item here. We have a presentation, staff briefing actually. So we have our solid waste program update and I believe we'll have Emily Warnock. Walking down the long hallway.
Hi, everybody, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Emily Warnock, Sustainability and Engagement Coordinator, and I'll be providing a brief update on solid waste programs and what we've got coming up in twenty twenty-one. First off, I'd like to start with upcoming service changes in previously annexed areas of the city. So on this map, you can see the areas in green were annexed from King County in twenty fourteen. And state law allows the existing waste hauler to continue serving this area for seven years after annexation. So starting on March first of next year, the hauler for these areas will change from waste management to recology. And this change will affect about eighteen hundred customers. And, and after, after March first, recology will be serving all of the City of Bothell. On another sort of element of this switch from recology to waste management, customers' carts will also be swapped out in advance of the change of service. So in February, recology and waste management will be working together to switch out the carts on service days. So effectively, customers will set out their carts as normal, but pull in new carts at the end of the day. To make sure that customers are well-informed about the process, recology is sending out information, letting people know that the hauler is changing and why. And this includes a notification postcard, which you can see here with the truck, as well as service guides and a welcome packet that includes FAQs and information on billing and service. So those will be sent out starting in January leading up to the March change. Prior to cart swaps, recology will also be placing cart tags on customers' carts and sending outbound messages to customers one week and then again one day before so that customers know what to expect with the cart changes. With the addition of about eighteen hundred new customers and the fact that the city is growing so much, we're also working with recology to look at and analyze the current waste collection routes to look for ways to improve efficiency and sustainability moving forward. So there are quite a few benefits to potential reroutes. From a sustainability perspective, adjustments would mean routes would be shorter with fewer miles traveled by trucks, which would overall result in lower emissions. Reroutes would also put less wear and tear on our city streets from heavy trucks and allow us to better absorb the growth that we're seeing happen in Bothell since the size of routes would be more balanced between service days. And then of course, there are improvements to customer service and benefits on that side of things. Having more balanced route sizes means more consistent collection times and it makes it easier to pick up special items for recycling or waste disposal and to service any houses that have missed collections. So this is a current map of service routes in Bothell and you can see the annexation areas in gray in the southern portion, sort of different pockets spread out across the map. And they're currently collected on the same day as the area that's shown in light green here. So you can see that that leaves one day spread out with service across the city. This map shows what an ideal route would look like based on additional annexation customers and taking into account optimal length and size of routes. So we're really looking at how we can improve efficiencies and sustainability moving forward. This is a more drastic reroute than other options. There are of course a range of options for reroutes. And this in particular shows about forty-eight percent of current customers who would be impacted by collection day changes. But going with larger reroutes now rather than smaller reroutes over time would also minimize service day disruptions in the future. And then along with annexation customers moving to recology, timing the reroutes to align with that would also help to streamline the communications that we have going out to the community and that recology would put together to target the specific customers that are affected. I also wanted to provide a brief update on the statewide plastic bag van that's starting January first. The Department of Ecology is moving forward with implementation and will be rolling out more communications about the bag van in the next few weeks. Although ecology is leading the charge, we really want to make sure that Bothell businesses and shoppers are ready for this change. We have information and resources provided by ecology up on our website. We've also reached out to the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce and will be sharing ecology's planned posts on social media over the next few weeks to make sure that the message is out to the community. I do want to point out that businesses can use up existing inventory of plastic bags through the next year, which provides a little leeway and flexibility. Given the current circumstances with the pandemic and concerns about reusable bags, it's important to remember that paper bags as well as thicker plastic bags will be available at checkout. And ecology is working closely with the state and federal agencies to follow the latest health guidelines. And they have added information and reminders about washing reusable bags between uses on many of their resources, including the flyer on the last slide. And then they provide quite a few additional resources on their website, including posters, flyers, parking lot sign reminders, and tilt-toppers like you see here for businesses to download and use at their workplaces. Lastly, I wanted to end by highlighting some of our fun ongoing programs and upcoming events that we have in Bothell. A lot of people have been ordering more online during the pandemic and even more so this time of year. We're seeing a lot more things like bubble wrap mailers that don't belong in curbside recycling bins ending up there. And in the case of bubble wrap mailers, they, they end up tangling up sorting machinery at recycling centers. So in addition to encouraging people to read up on current recycling guidelines and getting the message out through outreach, we wanted to be able to address the volume of materials that we're seeing like these. And we've placed special collection by boxes outside of City Hall so that people are still able to recycle these mailers. We also have our ongoing voucher program to recycle special items like large appliances and fluorescent bulbs and tubes at the Shoreline Recycling and Transfer Station. So that will start again in January. We've transitioned everything to be virtual so people can now request their vouchers by mail on our website and then take them to the recycling and transfer station anytime throughout the year. And then we have a couple of fun virtual events coming up. This Thursday at six thirty, recology is hosting a Zoom workshop where people can ask questions and learn about recycling from the experts. And it will have a holiday spin on how to properly dispose of waste after the holidays. And then lastly, we are teaming up with Uta Bothell and Cascadia to celebrate Earth Week virtually in April of next year, and with many more details to come on that. Thank you so much for your time. Are there any questions?
Councilmember McCullough.
Um, so I'm very impressed with City Hall having recycling boxes for all of the wrappings that are, are have, are coming with our mail, mail, with our online mail deliveries. So what exactly is that recycling going to take in? Is it the plastic? Is it the paper? What, what are going into that particular recycling boxes?
Yes, so the shipping materials that we accept, we're primarily targeting the bubble wrap mailers, like you would see from Amazon, for example. And paper mailers are also accepted as well as air cushions that are packed in boxes that are larger, bubble wrap, and then packing peanuts. So the service that we use will collect all of those shipping materials in one box and then they have a service that will separate those out and recycle them into new materials.
That is excellent. I'm so pleased because I know what a big problem this is for our community and for our, for our health. And where are these located?
The boxes are currently outside of City Hall, around the corner from the ballot drop boxes.
Excellent. Thank you, and I, I appreciate that because I will be using.
Councilmember Dewer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really excited to hear about that, too. I'm buying a lot from Amazon these days. But I did wonder, what do we do about Styrofoam that's not packing peanuts? Because I tried going to the recology store, it's not open, and I don't know what to do. I have a pile now sitting in my, my garage.
Yes, good for you for saving it up. The recology store is closed right now. They're working on a plan to reopen. For the time being, they are accepting a lot of the special items that they collect at the stores curbside. So they have a form on their website where you can go and request special collection for items like Styrofoam. Essentially, you leave it out by your curb side bins on your collection day and they will collect that.
I just wanted to mention also that I heard that there's a new company in Bothell that serves many communities, not just Bothell, but it's called Ridwell and you, you pay a subscription and they pick up various items, different items every week, from clothing to batteries to many items that we wouldn't normally have an option to get rid of. It's like fourteen dollars a week, but I thought that was kind of exciting, too, another option for reusing materials.
Councilmember Thompson.
I have another question. I just wanted to say that I'm in one of those areas that got annexed in two thousand and fifteen and I'm excited to finally get recology.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
I am glad to, well, I got outsmarted, or maybe it was gone because, because last time I went to look for the bubble wrap container, it wasn't there. And has it been around the corner the whole time? I've been outsmarted. So that's good to know it's around the corner. The, the other question I have, and it's, you know, it's a short-term gain, but it occurred to me that if you're looking for efficiencies in how the routes are run, short-term gain for the customer is lower fuel costs, I would think, for running these trucks. So I'm, if by some wild chance you get that data of, you know, yay, we save more gas or diesel or whatever it is that they're, you know, they're running on, that would be, that would be fun to hear. So, but thank you for this and I think I'll be joining you guys on Thursday, right?
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. It's on my.
Regarding the box locations, and they were previously by the ballot boxes and we were saying increased contamination right before the election with the stubs from ballots. So we did move them around the corner and we will be working with recology to gather data once we decide on reroutes to get some metrics on how much fuel we're saving and how much that reduces emissions to share with the community.
That's a curious thing that there's, there were ballot stubs there because I would, I could, I just have this mental picture of standing at the ballot box and filling out the final votes, but that's, that's an interesting thing to find there. There, there could be worse, so, but now I know where to find it, so thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor Olson. I just wanted to let you know that Councilmember Agnew is with us by phone, only we have him muted. So I don't know if at the end of each discussion you want to ask him if, if he would like to speak because we're getting a lot of background noise, so, but he is joining us by phone.
Can he unmute himself?
I don't know.
So you have, you have to do it.
This is Robin, Deputy Clerk. Yeah, he can unmute himself. I'm going to see if I can get. This is Robin, deputy clerk. Yeah, he can unmute himself. I'm going to see if I can get him the codes. It's like a star nine star six kind of thing. So I'm, I'm going to get that to him.
I am.
All right. Great to hear you at least. Yeah, feel free to unmute yourself and if you have some questions or comments, and I'll keep an eye out for that. And if not, I'll make every effort to ask you when we're doing our questions.
I appreciate that, sir.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation, Emily. Council asked all of my questions, so thanks for asking all those and answering them. Yeah, it's gonna be an onslaught of the Styrofoam, big blocks of Styrofoam, I think with all Christmas coming up. So, so yeah, I've gone past recology a couple of times and it's all dark so far, but that's, that's great to hear about going to the recology website. All right, on to our next item. We have a council committee reports. Does anyone have a report they'd like to make? Deputy Mayor Jones.
I was hoping somebody would leave in before me. LTAC met today. And let me give a just a few highlights. Tourism manager, Danae McGee is going to give a presentation, I think the first of 2021, so we can dive in deeper. But just looking up above, a quick bird's eye view. They're finding the website motivates people to stay longer, which is great. We we met with Streetsense today and they gave us data that went all the way up through April of this year. They're also finding that families and people with children like to visit Bothell more than they initially anticipated when they were looking at the demographics who like to come into Bothell and just visit. Evidently, there are families that like to come in. Uh, most are just, most of our visits are day visits. And 80% of those people have indicated a high probability of coming back into Bothell. And day visits are 100 miles or less coming in. Overnight stays went in, went up from 3,954 to 5,106. And I don't think those were, that included business occupancy into hotels. And and then also a a large number of people come in to visit Bothell who are staying with family and friends, which speaks to our community as well. It's not just our hotels that host. It's, it's the people who live here. And then why people come into Bothell, I thought you might like to hear some of the reasons. It's, the big ones are camping and cycling, fishing, sightseeing, water and snow sports, wine and brewery, which makes sense. Also, what was really interesting that got on the radar with Streetsense is birding and history and heritage for people coming into Bothell. So, you know, make a mental note that people are interested in that. So our return on investment went from a little over 6 million to over 8 million during 2019 through the first part of 2020. And that's, that's the bird's eye view. And think of your questions and be ready for Danae to give her presentation at the beginning of the year. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, it's hard to see with the virtual background, but I wanted to give a couple of brief updates. ETP Skateboard and Seashore, the transportation boards all had a meeting this morning. And then we had a breakout session where ETP Eastside Transportation Partnership went into its own room and passed the legislate 2021 legislative priorities list. And there is a ratification. It's gonna go out. There was a few cities like Mercer Island, Woodinville, and Duval that wanted opportunity to bring it before their councils. And so it will come back to us hopefully before the fifth so that it can be approved and signed on the sixth. So I just wanted to go through a couple of things that are in that legislative priority list. And I will ensure that once that updated list from today gets complete, that we get that sent around to council. Their support for the 405 Bus Rapid Transit corridor in there. The master planning, complete the I-405 master plan. Updates on the 522 and 527 were mentioned in there. Funding mechanism for I-976 with the I-976 overturned, do not reinstate its revenue cuts legislatively. Ensure that all state commitments made to local municipalities, including connecting Washington Revenue Package and Transportation Benefit Districts are maintained. Try to create some new revenue options. Public Works Trust adequately fund this financing tool to support transportation infrastructure needs. There was mention of estate fuel taxes, road usage charges, and new technologies model and strategies, safe projects like Fund Target Zero, bicycle pedestrian infrastructure and policies. Councilmember Thompson made a suggestion to to move the new technologies up. While it didn't get moved up, I thought it was a great suggestion to bring some of these things that are often towards the tail end up to the front. So great suggestion on that, although it didn't get moved up. It's a very short legislative priority list. Hopefully, the legislators get it in their inbox when they, when they first get there. And then we will make sure that council gets an opportunity to see that before it's signed on the sixth. So that's my update for ETP. On the PSRC is looking to form a funding committee. And since I'm on the PSRC Executive Board, I'd like to put my name in the hat to ensure that Bothell has a seat at the table for those funding discussions. So hopefully, council would be okay with me since I'm already on the PSRC Executive Board, putting my name in the hat to ensure that we're, we have a seat at the table on that. And that's my reports. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right, on to visitor comment. So in keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's emergency proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. City clerk, were there any comments received?
I did not receive any, however, I believe there is an attendee or two that would like to speak. Isn't that correct, Robin?
Sorry, my computer wasn't unmuting there after multiple clicks. Yes, we do have someone. His name is Rob Beam, and I'm going to panel him in right now.
Thank you.
There he is. He is coming down the hall.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager. My name is Rob Beam. I'm here to say thank you at the end of the year. I sit on the North European Human Service Alliance Board. And we want to express our gratitude for the council and the city's actions to continue the partnerships with funded human service agencies on into next year and 2022. So we were busy doing our annual awards last week, or we would have been here earlier to say thank you to you. We appreciate the accessibility that council members had to us and the city manager. Appreciated the conversations we had. And of course, on behalf of all the members who are serving residents of Bothell, we want to thank you for continuing your support to those agencies and services that are so needed now, in particular in the age of COVID. I will mention that we were at our annual awards last week and radar, a program you're all familiar with, was recognized as one of the nominees for our annual human service award organizations of the year for their work in Bothell and the other cities in North King County. It was a pleasure to learn that the funding for radar has been secured and expanded for coming years. And you're ably staffed and represented on that by Brooke. We're delighted to see her doing this work and having such an impact on the community. So I won't take up more of your time. I wish everybody a restful and restorative time over the holiday break and look forward to working with you next year as you reimagine the process you use to select human services awardees and grants that will serve folks in the city of Bothell. So thank you very much. We appreciate working with you and appreciate the work you all do. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, that was our single speaker.
That is all I show that want to sign up or that want to speak.
All right. On to our consent agenda. We had two items pulled, but would anyone like to make a motion for the remainder? Councilmember Doer.
I move the consent agenda, two items pulled.
Councilmember Thompson.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Doer moved to approve the gen, the consent agenda with items 20-165 and 20-172 pulled with a second by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion? Seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Pass is seven zero.
All right, first item up that was pulled is AB 20-165, the approval of the third quarter financial report. So I would guess Director Chris Bothwell will be here. Great. So Councilmember Doer, you pulled this item?
Pulled this item because I think there's some great news in there that should be, the public should be made aware of. And also I had some specific questions, numbers or relative numbers that didn't really say. But I I I'll stop hinting around and let the finance director speak to the good news, or relatively good news.
Yeah, so, you know, the, so the third quarter financial results were positive relative to, particularly relative to our early forecast. So the success of the efforts that the organization took early on in the pandemic to curtail spending. Those, those efforts have been very successful as well as there's been a positive change in the, initially, you may recall when we were talking about the, our response to the pandemic, we had forecasted a very large deficit for this year. And one of the things that was kind of missing that we had hoped would be there would be some support from the federal government via the CARES Act. And initially, it was very clear that we weren't going to get any funding. And then the the interpretation or the distribution of that money changed significantly several months in. And and we did get a significant chunk of money to to kind of help us defray some of the costs associated with our response to the pandemic. So, you know, all those things, sales tax seems to be rebounding as of September. Sales tax collections were fairly strong, pretty much on pace with what we saw in September of last year. So things seem to be coming back a little bit. And, you know, that with the CARES Act funding, the result is generally positive, you know, under normal, I can, normal conditions, we wouldn't say it was a positive result. But we've been, there's been so much doom and gloom, and we've been preparing for this to go on for a much longer period of time. And so the the result has really been positive. And I will note that the report also says that we're expecting sales tax collections in the fourth quarter to be really strong. And that's just the the result of just kind of an analysis of the the trend. We don't see a huge bump in the fourth quarter traditionally. We know that our residents are spending money doing a lot of holiday shopping in the fourth quarter, but we know they're likely doing that at destination retail outside of the city. With a lot of that being and it, it's not advisable, or we're being told not to do that with the the sales that are going to be delivered into the city of Bothell. We're going to get the sales tax from that. So we're expecting a really positive fourth quarter result for sales tax as well. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to report on that because of the lag in sales tax until it's going to be really anticlimactic. It'll be like, you know, March before I'm able to tell you how it actually plays out, but we're expecting to have a good result in the fourth quarter from sales tax as well. So, you know, after a really dark period, I would say financially and a lot of uncertainty, things seem to be kind of stabilizing and possibly coming back. So, you know, that's kind of the gist of the report. So I appreciate you pulling it so we could kind of highlight that because it has been a lot of angst and kind of dark days in the past, but maybe we're turning.
Thank you for that. I just wondered if you could, I mean, so in the report, it states that we're looking at a surplus even before we account for the CARES Act dollars. So I wondered if you could give us an order of magnitude. I know you can't give us certainty, but an order of magnitude of that surplus with the CARES Act dollars.
I appreciate the wiggle room because generally speaking, I think we're generally forecasting like either to be flat. So current year operating, just, just revenue and expenditures meet and and we end up with a zero to up to a million dollar surplus. And that's, that's, that's before CARES Act funding, which we received about $2 million in CARES Act funding. And and the the shift is primarily the result of what we're expecting to see in the fourth quarter. That the savings that we've seen from the early measures that were taken have really kind of resulted in that best case scenario. The organization has really taken those things seriously. And and the result has been positive. So we didn't know what to expect, a tremendous amount of uncertainty, but but, you know, I would say that we're going to be somewhere between a million or zero to a million in surplus before CARES Act funding and probably two to $3 million surplus by the end of the year, if everything plays out the way we expect it to. So, but I do appreciate the wiggle room.
So with that, what happens with the surplus? Do we apply it to, like, we've already, I, did we already take money out of the general fund reserves to cover the 2019-2020 budget? Or would we apply it to the money that we were going to take from the general fund reserve for the 2022-23 budget? How does that work?
So kind of both. So the money just, I mean, that's the great thing about the general fund and we have, when we have a general fund surplus is we can kind of do whatever the council desires with that. So the current plan would be to fund the 21-22 deficit. Or, you know, we're going to do a really deep dive at the end, you know, as we kind of get to the midpoint near the end of 2021 in terms of with the mid biennial budget adjustment. But any deficit that we realize between the beginning and the time that we actually implement, whatever changes may result from the mid biennial budget adjustment would be funded with the the additional fund balance. Yeah. While it is good news, there's a number of unmet needs that are still out there, right? We haven't contributed to the, to the asset replacement fund. We have ongoing cleanup costs for downtown, downtown property cleanup that we don't have a funding source identified for, and those would be like the matching funds. That's going to be a tough one. There's the lease payment. We've got shortfall. We're using fund balance out of REIT one to make the lease payment on City Hall this year. And REIT is trending a little bit better than we expected. So what we thought would be probably a $750 to a million REIT one infusion to make that payment is probably going to be something a little bit less, maybe 500 to $750,000. So there's still a number of unmet needs. The trend is positive, but there's no shortage of places that that need kind of some shoring up at this point for that fund balance. And and I think to your point, the likely, you know, without any further action, that that's going to end up helping with 21 and possibly 22.
Okay, I would be interested at some point. I know we always, we always talk about the budget and budget years, but it seems like knowing that and budget years, but it seems like knowing that we have a structural deficit, that we need a broader conversation around future action so that we're not doing it in two-year increments, but actually developing a really long-term plan. That's just my two cents. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of your hard work to get us where we are. Should I make a motion or does anybody else want to answer the question?
Mayor Olson, I'm showing that Councilmember Agnew has his hand raised. I don't know if he has a question, but if you could call on him in case he does.
Yeah. Councilmember Agnew checking on you?
Yeah, I really don't know why my hand was raised. I don't have any questions, but I'd like to say nicely done, Chris.
All right, Councilmember Doer.
I move the recommended action.
Councilmember McNeil.
Second.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Doer to approve the third quarter financial report as presented with the second by Councilmember McNeil. Any discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Doar.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you. Onto our final pulled item is AB 20-172, approval of professional services supplement number one with CWA for on-call structural plan review services. So I believe this one will go over to Director Michael Kaderman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Zornz, for pulling this item. Speaking of good news, we've got a little bit more to share with the council this evening. I think you're all familiar with the Seattle Times Printing Plant site and the fact that that sold to a developer that's going to be demolishing that building sometime in the next couple of weeks. And in its place, they're proposing about 900 dwelling units in some mid-rise as well as townhouse projects. And they have submitted their first set of plans for plan review approval. And we based that on the valuation, we based the fee on the valuation of the project. And the valuation of this project is over $600 million, which brings that fee to about 1.7 million. So that's a, we were faced with a good challenge when that came in, in that we have, we have consultants on contract that can do some of the specific work that needs to be done as far as the review, the structural review of the project. Unfortunately, we don't have a contract with them for that amount of money that would be involved. So we've come to you this evening asking you to extend the contract through 21 and increase the amount to 695,000, which includes the 95,000 we already had in there, plus the 600,000 that we're asking to add to that, that will cover the expense of this project to contract that work out, as well as some additional projects that we're anticipating will come in. I should note that the, the building permit fee, which will come later on, when we're ready to issue those permits, we estimate to be about 2.7 million. And if you put those two amounts together, that exceeds the amount of revenue that we had originally targeted or anticipated for 2020. So that's, that's the good news. And this is phase one of the project. And we have other large projects that are going to be in the queue this coming year. So we're just asking that the council approve the amendment to the contract that would extend it through 21 and increase the amount so that we can use CWA to do the structural review on, on this large project that's happening in our North Creek area.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I'll, I'll yield the floor for anyone who has questions. I just wanted to thank Director Kaderman for filling us in on that project, both giving us more of a backstory and also the city at, at large. It's going to be hard not to notice the project. And I think more eyes and ears that have this information and know the size and scope of this information, this is, this is great to have. We're not in the dark and we kind of, and, and it's a way that we all kind of own our city. So thank you for filling us in on the size and scope of this project.
Thank you. If I didn't mention it, this is phase one of two.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Kaderman. I got this in email today, that something was getting added to the consent agenda, and I started to read through it, and it was like, this is going to add $600,000 in cost. And I'm like, consent agenda at the last minute? What is happening? And, and it was all very good news, and I just thought that was funny, so I thought I'd share. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank the Deputy Mayor for actually pulling this item and Director Kaderman for your, your presentation and update on this. I think it's for cities to be fiscally responsible right now during this pandemic and, and all the things and trials and tribes that we're having right now is significantly important. And to be able to contract a revenue neutral project like this in our community just shows how great our community is and developers wanting to develop here. So I just wanted to say thank you, you know, for always being fiscally responsible on this type of thing.
So one more question for me, Director Kaderman. So you mentioned the first phase is approximately 900 units. Is the second phase approximately the same?
The, the total is 900 for both phases.
Okay, both phases are 900.
Yes.
All right. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I'd like to move that we approve AB 2172 of professional services supplement, never mind with CWA for on-call structural plan review services.
Councilmember Doer.
I second that motion.
All right, great. We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Zornz, a second by Councilmember Doer for the recommended action. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough. You're, you're muted. Councilmember McCullough, here on mute. Okay, she's saying yes. Thumbs up. Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Doar.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you, everyone. So our next item is the public hearing, AB 20-171, but I say we take a five-minute break or so, come back at 7:05. Looks like we have about an hour scheduled for that one, so everyone can get some water or stand up for that time and then we'll come back. We are back and we will be starting our public hearing for AB 20-171. So it's a public hearing on Canyon Park Subarea Plan Development Regulations and Planned Action Ordinance. So I will open the public hearing and I will call on Community Development Director Michael Kaderman.
Thank you, Mayor Olson, and good evening, members of the council. I do have a brief presentation for you this evening before we get into the testimony portion. And things are moving a little slowly. Is that visible?
Yep.
Great, thank you. So this is a public hearing this evening for the City Council on the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Development Regulations and Planned Action Ordinance. There are three separate actions, three separate items on for the public hearing and three separate actions. These will be individual actions that will be asking the council to take after the public hearing this evening. Each one of these would be adopted in order, the subarea plan, then the development regulations, and then the planned action ordinance. So I'll have a brief presentation and then there'll be public testimony. And then I have the project team here to answer any questions from the council. The project team includes Eddie Low and Sherman Gong from our Public Works Department, as well as Dave Boyd from Community Development. And our consultant team consists of Rachel Miller and Bob Bangford with Makers Architecture. They were the lead on the project, on the consultant team, and were also the primary leads on the development regulations and the subarea plan itself. I have Lisa Greeter with Burke Consulting. Burke was the lead on the environmental review for, for the project, as well as the market analysis. And then Carmen Kwan with Farron Peers, who was the lead on the transportation analysis that was done for the project. All of them were involved in development of the subarea plan, certainly. So this was, been a rather extensive work project and, and complex as well. So we're talking about the Canyon Park Subarea. This map highlights the, an aerial of that area. You can see the, the cross, crossing of I-405 and I-27, the Bothell Levered Highway, the interchange there in the southwest corner of the subarea. And as you can see, that the area is mostly developed. There are some undeveloped areas, a couple of them are large Centennial Park at the northwest corner, and then some critical areas also scattered throughout the park. There's a lot, still a lot of potential growth for this area, and we're looking at doing an increase in the residential and land use mix, as well as increasing the employment, specifically in the area of the high tech and biotech. That's where we've seen a lot of the growth. This is a regional transportation corridor, is part of those two corridors that I mentioned, the Bothell Levered Highway and I-405. And then we also have State Route 524, which is the Mulberry Road at the very top north part of this. And a portion of this area is designated as the city's Regional Growth Center under the Pugent Town Regional Council's designation. So we, the challenge that we're really facing is that we have all these regional assets that I just spoke about in terms of the major highways, as well as a regional park and ride that exists along 405 near the interchange. There are a lot of natural areas, particularly wetlands in North Creek, and we have a rather complicated transportation system due to the fact that there's a lot of traffic that goes through this area that doesn't necessarily originate or, or have a destination in this area. It goes through the area and it comes from outside of Bothell. So there's a certain amount of traffic that we really have no control over. But there is also a significant amount of traffic that is a part of this area. We know that growth is going to occur, whether it would be under this plan or some other plan or no plan at all, growth has been occurring in this area and it will continue to occur. And with growth, you're going to have additional traffic. There's just really no way around that. That's the reality that we're dealing with. We recognize that early on, and we have to figure out a way to address that, to make sure that we're complying with our level of service requirements, as well as other transportation needs that we have in this area, and try to address all of those and balance that with the amount of growth that we're anticipating. I would point out that the plan itself does not create the growth, the growth is going to occur. We're really just trying to plan for that growth and make sure that we are able to do it in a way that can benefit the Canyon Park area, as well as the city and the region as a whole. So that was going to take some commitments of, of additional planning work in the future as we grow the dynamics of that and how that needs to change, funding, both local and regional funding, particularly in the area of transportation, and additional public engagement as we work on the implementation of the plan and the, the other implementation pieces that go with that. Some of the things that are driving this change are changes in the demographics and what we're seeing in terms of employment in the area. Tech workers have different expectations in terms of employment and the areas that they work in. They want to live close to work. They want to have options for getting to work other than having to drive their car and, and drive through, through typical traffic and, and roadways. They're also looking for amenities, both where they live and where they work. And by amenities, we mean things, places to gather, whether that's an after-work gathering spot, or even just a place to stroll around during a break or a lunch hour, places to meet up with friends or coworkers, and also get together and share ideas with, with similar professionals, even from other companies. There's a lot of There's a lot of brainstorming that can occur in a very informal situation. And those are all part of the amenities package that we're trying to create as part of this. Mixed use is an important aspect of that. So it's more than just an employment area. We want to retain that employment area. That's critical to this, as well as provide some additional uses, the residential, as well as the services, retail and other services that go along with that. And again, as I mentioned, providing transportation choices. So there are options to getting around, getting to and through and around in the SubArea itself. So this plan was really developed in three phases over almost four years. So there's been quite a bit of time and effort that's gone into this from staff, from the community, and also from our consultant team. The first phase started out with Bruce Blackburn back in 2017. So this was one of the early priorities of the council in that period and primarily because of the Regional Growth Center designation and the desire to retain that designation under the new criteria that had recently been approved by the Puget Sound Regional Council. Out of that visioning process, we always start a planning process with a vision. What is it that we anticipate? But what is it that we want to see happen in an area? And then how do we get there? There were four main things that came out of that vision, four goals that came out of that visioning exercise with a lot of the tenants in the business, in the SubArea, the Business Park in particular, property owners, community members, that were all part of that visioning process. They really see this area as an economic driver. It has been, it will continue to be, and it needs to continue to be. To look at it as more of a multifaceted neighborhood, so it's more than just an employment area. It really is a neighborhood, a larger neighborhood. And then there are neighborhoods within the SubArea as well. There are a lot of natural features. North Creek, some large wetlands, Centennial Park, some hillsides that all contribute to the natural environment and are very important to protect and also to connect the area to those. Those can serve as some of the amenities that I was referencing earlier. And then recognizing that this is a transportation hub and it will continue to be, and not just in terms of highways and roadways, but also in terms of transit and other means of getting around. So in the second phase, we built on that vision and created some concepts for what might happen over time, what we might want to see happen over time, and developed some land use alternatives. And then analyzed those in terms of what type of mix would it bring in? How many people would it bring in? What type of transportation would it generate? And how would we deal with those? Included in those alternatives, as part of the environmental analysis, was the existing plan. And we're starting from a standpoint of already having met the growth target for 2035, within the first five years of the plan. So again, that's recognizing that growth is occurring, is going to continue to occur, regardless of what our plan is. So we need to make sure that we're anticipating and planning for that increase that's going to happen over the next 20 years through 2044. So the draft plan and regulations and then planned action came out of those alternatives. The Planning Commission, back in March of this year, had been working through all of the alternatives and understanding what the different implications of those were, the impacts, the pros and cons. And they selected a preferred alternative that allowed us to meet the criteria required by the Puget Sound Regional Council, but also to develop a mix of land uses that we felt would really help this area flourish over the long term and be able to develop some transportation improvements that would be able to serve that growth and maintain a level of service. I'm not going to go through all of these, but just wanted to highlight a summary of all of the public involvement that started way back envisioning and continued throughout the process, up to and including the public hearings that have been held the last few weeks. And then last August, we did a couple of virtual open houses and another online survey to really confirm some of the things that we've been hearing consistently through this process, from visioning all the way through to the development of the alternatives. So some of the issues that I wanted to highlight for you this evening that are addressed in the plan and the other documents. Land use and economic development. As I mentioned, preserving employment, preserving this as a job growth area is really important and it's a critical aspect of the plan. We are doing that by making sure that when we do the mix of uses, we have the mix in the areas that are appropriate and we preserve the employment areas just for the employment. So we no longer allow residential, for example, in a lot of the area of the park that was previously zoned or is currently zoned, I should say, the Residential Activity Center, which allows residential as well as employment and retail uses. So we've taken the residential out of that. Making sure we allow for the residential and other service uses, though, along the Bothell River Highway and particularly in the nodes at the north and south ends of that. So Thrasher's Corner at the north end and then Canyon Place at the south end, on either side of I-405 interchange. All in all, we really want to create a livable, walkable area that have those amenities that I've talked about for both residents and employees. And then retaining that Regional Growth Center designation, again, is very important and one of the goals of the council in starting this process. So this is being implemented through aspects of the SubArea Plan, the Development Regulations, making sure we're protecting and adequately preserving those natural features. There are going to be capital investments involved by both the city, private development, as well as regional funding. And then making sure that we're coordinating with other agencies as we work through this process and implementation. So just very quickly highlighting the areas that are in the different colors, the brighter colors here, are all within the new boundaries of the Regional Growth Center. We've shrunk the Regional Growth Center from, I think it was over 700 acres, to a little over 500 acres today. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is we were including a lot of natural areas that would never develop. So it was really forcing us to have to put more growth into other parts of the Regional Growth Center in order to achieve the minimums necessary for the Regional Growth Center designation. So we brought it down to those areas that we really did see as being more appropriate for that development. And it also brings it in a little bit tighter in terms then of the walkability and the livability and creates those mixed areas, as I mentioned, excuse me, at the north end and the south end, with some opportunities for mix along the highway. And you can see in the lighter purple areas, those are the ones that are exclusively for the employment development. So transportation has been and will continue to be a significant issue for this area, not just this area, this is true across the region, but it is one that we heard repeatedly through the process of developing the SubArea Plan. There really are no easy solutions and that shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. We're looking at really doing a multiple, a multi-pronged approach, is what I was trying to say. So we're looking at some roadway capacity. We're not going to be able to build our way out of this in terms of roadways. We want to make better use of the roads that we have, but also add some roadways where it's feasible and where it also helps in terms of the traffic. Also look at more non-single-argument vehicle or car options that are attractive and that's through a transportation demand management program that is one of the keys to the transportation approach to this. There are three streets that we're looking at extending and I'll show you a graphic of that in just a second. And then improving our ped bike connections and really prioritizing transit. That was something that came out of the Planning Commission very early on, was recognizing that transit needed to be a higher priority for this area to really meet the future growth needs. So again, this is implemented through a lot of the things that I've mentioned already, including the Planned Action Ordinance and then coordination with transportation agencies. One of the outreach elements that we did through this process was convene a group of transportation agencies from Snohomish County, WashDOT, Community Transit and Sound Transit, to really look at the overall transportation system and how we can improve on that. So here's a map showing where some of those roadway improvements are, the extensions. So one option we're looking at is an extension of 214th over to Ninth Avenue. There are a couple of options to this. One is a shared use path. That would be sort of the minimum that we would look at. That would improve a lot of the pedestrian connections. But in terms of providing some overall relief to the Bothell River Highway and the traffic growth along there, we really would look at extending that as a roadway. Another key to this is extending 20th out to Maltby Road or 524. That provides another ingress and egress point for the overall SubArea and the park itself. Currently, there are only three ways in and out of the Business Park. So this would provide another alternative to that and help to relieve some of the congestion, particularly around the intersection with 524 and 527. And then a third, which is a little lower priority because it really provides less benefit to the overall area and more so to the southwest park here, Phillips. The Phillips Company and that portion of the park into their parking area. So also note, we're looking at additional bike lanes, shared use paths, shared lanes for bicycles along some of the roadways, as well as trails and sidewalks that really increase the overall pedestrian network and bicycle network through that area. Then next, we have the issues around the environment. As I mentioned, there are some really fantastic natural features in this area. North Creek being one of the more notable ones. There are several tributaries to North Creek, as well as some large wetlands in the area. We want to not only preserve those, but make sure we're ensuring that the water quality is maintained and that they continue to function, wetlands in particular, that serve their natural function in terms of helping water quality. Flooding, to a certain extent, due to the amount of impervious surface that we have in the area. And then air pollutants primarily from automobile traffic around residential uses. And then the habitat value of the area as well. So this is where we focus more on some of our existing regulations, like our critical areas and our stormwater regulations. But there's also more in the Planned Action Ordinance. And then we're also proposing, sorry, proposing as part of that, an air quality buffer, which would be along I-405 within the SubArea that would basically prohibit residential development within that buffer area. So it would be just the non-residential type uses that could occur there. So just a little bit about the Planned Action Ordinance itself, because this is an important piece of the overall project. This is what we've done for the downtown. So we're doing the same approach in Canyon Park. Essentially, this means that the environmental analysis has been done for this area. So as long as projects come in that are consistent with what's in the plan and what's been analyzed as part of that EIS, they would not have to do a separate environmental review for the project. So that saves time and saves money for projects. And it's one of the real benefits and incentives that the city can provide. It's that environmental review process. And this has been very successful in downtown. So as far as next steps this evening, Commissioner, the Commission Chair, Kevin Kiernan, is here this evening as well. If you have any questions about the public hearing or all of the work that the Planning Commission has done on this, the plan and the regulations over the last year or more, they've been heavily involved. I think at one point, we'd had so many meetings with the Planning Commission on this, they were ready to change their name to the Canyon Park Planning Commission. But they did some extraordinary work in getting through this and really coming up with some solid recommendations for the council. The hearing for the council is this evening. The project team, as I mentioned, is here along with the Commission Chair Kiernan to answer any questions that you might have. And then the Planning Commission and the staff are recommending that the council adopt the SubArea Plan, the Development Regulations and the Planned Action Ordinance as separate items in that order. A little bit in terms of next steps going forward. Speaking of going forward, if I can get my cursor to go forward. Well, basically, there are some additional work items that we have deferred that are going to require some additional analysis that we decided not to include in the plan at this time. Things like the transfer of development rights that we're working on with Sound Transit related to the bus base that's proposed there, as well as the commercial linkage fee for affordable housing. We do have affordable housing for residential and mixed-use developments. We don't have anything right now for the commercial. In terms of the fee, we're still working on what that fee should be. This is similar to a fee that we have in some of the downtown zones. Then we're also looking at, the private road issue will continue, as well as other implementation items that we're looking at. The bonus incentive system being another one for floor area ratio. So with that, I will just stop because it's not moving forward for me. And then, as I said, the team is here, mayor and council. Once we're finished with the public testimony, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. City Clerk, were there any comments received?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we received quite a few written comments and also we have several people on the line. So I will go through the written comments first. The first one we received was Gail Cox, Cox Printing. She wrote in opposition of the proposed plan. Next is Adrian, and I probably butcher these names, but Stroescu of Extendus Day America shared some traffic concerns with the plan and that is in line with the Homeowners Association. Next is James Shadley of the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association. He has concerns regarding traffic congestion and urging the council to delay the plan until all concerns of homeowners or association are resolved. Next is Kim Berg of Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association. She listed questions and concern that she had that she says are unanswered by the plan and urges the council to address them before the plan is approved. Karen Martinez, also the Canyon Park Business Center Association, has concerns over traffic congestion and incompletion of the plan and urged council to delay. Eric Colton of McDonald's, major traffic concerns and asked council to delay the project. Will Hargraves of Kinnis's Corporation requested to defer the final approval until more solutions and studies can be added for traffic mitigation. Allison Dutton of Engineered Equipment, concerns over traffic congestion and double density, urges council to address those before approving. Karen Parham of Anchor Health Properties, concerns of traffic congestion and double density impacts. Pat Farmer of JCP Pizza has concerns over traffic and proposed affordable housing. Donwell Stetz of Carbine Creek Holdings shares traffic concerns with the Owners Association and urges delay of approval until those concerns are addressed. That is all I have for written comment. All those were shared with council and will be made part of the record. And then I have, I'm showing five people on the line to speak. There may be others. So the first person I have on the line is Travis Lynn. So Robin, if you could panel them in or unmute them, I believe they're on the phone. And Mr., oh, there you are. Mr. Lynn, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Travis Lynn and I am the Capital Projects Manager for Geno Therapeutics, located at 1522 217th Place Southeast here in Bothell. For over one year, Juno's been planning the expansion of our campus to continue to meet the needs of our employees in the healthcare industry and recruit and retain world-class talent in Bothell. We've been working with our architects under the current code to plan for, design and permitting, including a submittal with the city earlier this fall. We're gearing up for a submittal of our permit set in 2021 so that we can start construction, hopefully, in 2022 with our new building. While we support the vision of the Canyon Park SubArea Plan, we were concerned that if the new code was adopted, we would have to restart all our design and permitting work, which would result in serious delay. That's why over the last few months, we've worked with the city staff and Planning Commission to include a transition period to the updated Canyon Park SubArea Land Use Code to allow for projects which have achieved a specific point in the design process to be vested under the existing land use code. The Planning Commission supported the inclusion of this transition period concept into the final draft before you today. The city used a similar concept when you adopted the updated downtown code. We appreciate the work and thoughtfulness of the city staff and the Planning Commission in adding a narrow transition period into the new code. We believe that with our site's expansion, we will continue to increase our ability to recruit and retain top biotech talent. And we're looking forward to drawing more people to work, live and shop in the Bothell area, continuing our presence as a top-notch employer alongside our Bothell business partners. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of Juno to encourage the City Council to adopt the code with the language concerning this transition period, as included in the final draft provided the City Council. Thank you.
I'm mute.
Laura, you're on mute. Can you announce the next person, please?
I'm sorry, it's Liza Skrupski. I hope I said that correctly.
Can you guys see me?
Yes.
Hi.
We have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lisa Skrupski. I'm with Steelwave. And we are a full-service commercial residential and mixed-use real estate and investment management firm. We own and operate seventeen buildings in Canyon Park and our portfolio is expected to grow. Our tenants' businesses include AGC Biologics, Microsoft, Cepheid, Geno Therapeutics, Seattle Genetics, Thermo Fisher Scientific, to name a few. We share the traffic concerns of Canyon Park Business Center Association. We are concerned that the proposal, the proposed Canyon Park Plan would more than double the density in the sub area and significantly increase traffic congestion. Yet this plan fails to deal with the traffic gridlocks. Traffic in Canyon Park is already bad for businesses. Sometimes it takes over a half hour just to leave the park in the evening commute. We are also concerned about the proposed affordable housing fee and its impact on local businesses. This fee, which is undefined, will be decided later by city council and is the last thing that our local businesses need when they're struggling due to COVID-19. I urge the city council not to approve the Canyon Park Subarea Plan update until traffic, until the traffic issues brought up by the owners association are resolved and the proposed fees on the businesses are decided so that the business community can have an input. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Robin Carmichael.
Good evening, City Council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Robin Carmichael and I'm CEO of Helix Biomedics, a biotech located in the Canyon Park Business Center. We specialize in the development of peptides and proteins for dermatological use. And before I go further, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. It's been very interesting attending your meeting and I can tell that you are committed and working hard to bettering the community. I share the cat, traffic concerns expressed by the Canyon Park Business Owners Association. I'm concerned that the current Canyon Park Plan would more than double the density of the sub area and significantly increase the existing traffic problems. I'm worried that the plan fails to provide a plan that would adequately deal with the traffic congestion. Currently, traffic in Canyon Park is already bad for the businesses and for our employees. We've been in the Canyon Park Business Center for over seventeen years and have watched the traffic conditions continually worsen. Our office is across the street from McDonald's and Starbucks. We're on Seventeenth Avenue Southeast. We have a limited approach to and exit from our building parking lot. We're confined by the Seventeenth Avenue Southeast road to get to the 405 freeway and the Canyon Park Park and Ride causes surges in traffic, especially in the pre-COVID area, era, that really impact the evening traffic. Our staff try to leave the office by 3:50 PM or wait until after 6:00 PM because of this bottleneck. In the evening, the backup on Seventeenth Avenue Southeast can be a weight of two to four turns of the light on a good night before you can make a left-hand turn onto 220th Street Southeast and there's no room to enter the lanes. The flow of the east-west traffic on 220th Southeast consistently fills the left two lanes for southbound turns onto the Bothell Everett Highway, which is also backed up. The new condominiums in the middle of the business park at 220th Street Southeast and 23rd Drive Southeast will now add more congestion to the area. I'm very, very concerned about the existing traffic situation and it's caused me to look at other areas to relocate my business. I'm alarmed that the city is now working to increase density in traffic and I know it's a difficult problem and growth is both good and bad. But the traffic as it exists currently is just not acceptable for employees, customers or visitors. This plan will hurt the existing businesses and I respectfully urge the city council not to approve the Canyon Park Subarea Plan until the traffic concerns raised by the business community are resolved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Dave Morgan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council Members. I want to begin by saying thank you for serving our community. My name is Dave Morgan and I'm the executive pastor at Canyon Hills Community Church on Seventeenth Avenue Southeast in Canyon Park. I'm also on the board of the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association. I know you're all well aware of the traffic concerns that the owners association has conveyed to you. The plan's lack of adequate traffic mitigation will create more gridlock and impact businesses and their employees, customers and visitors. These issues really need to be addressed before the city council approves the plan. My specific comments concern the cumulative traffic impacts on organizations and businesses on Seventeenth Avenue Southeast from the proposed Wash.I-405 toll lane onto Seventeenth Avenue and the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. The Subarea Plan update will double density and increase traffic and congestion in Canyon Park and the Wash.Toll Lane will bring an additional thousand cars per hour into the business park during peak times. The cumulative traffic impacts of these two projects will be significant and painful for every organization and business on Seventeenth Avenue, including our church. I'm concerned that our church members will face even more congestion and gridlock than they do today. Since we use our facility virtually every day of the week, I'm concerned that our church members will have difficulties with ingress and egress into our parking lots due to congestion. I'm also concerned that more gridlock will lead to cut-through traffic and impact public safety in the park as people try to get in and out of the park any way they can. Before the city council approves the Canyon Park Subarea Plan update, I urge you to evaluate the cumulative impacts of both the Wash.I-405 ETL Lane Project and the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Update. The owners association is not opposed to development, but the planning for growth needs to include adequate mitigation for traffic congestion and gridlock. I can't stress that enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the last person I have on my list is Rod, Roger Belanich.
Hi, City Clerk. This is Robin and I do not see that Roger is on the meeting. However, we do have one other person who I inadvertently left off the list. Her name is Molly Lawrence. And I can see her here. I'm going to panel her in and hopefully we can hear from Roger in the meantime.
Thank you.
Good evening. I hope you can see and hear me. Good evening.
Yes, we can. Thank you. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Molly Lawrence and I'm a partner at Vanas Feldman. I represent the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association. I'm here tonight at the owner's request to express their continuing opposition to this plan. You've heard from many of our members tonight and there are a few comments that I know are missing from the list that I know have been submitted tonight as well in opposition to this plan. The association acknowledges the significant effort that the city's plan has put into this plan at this point. We appreciate those efforts, but we can't support the plan as proposed. We have submitted literally dozens of pages of comments on the sub area plan and environmental review expressing the sincere and significant concerns of the owners of the majority of properties within the proposed regional growth center. Inexplicably, our concerns have largely been ignored. Our primary concern is traffic. We have repeatedly asked the simple question, why is the city seeking to force additional density into the sub area when it's not yet able to accommodate the traffic that already exists there? We've never received an answer to that. We heard Director Katterman again say tonight that the plan is not going to drive growth, that it's coming anyway. That is untrue in really important ways. The FEIS clearly spells out the mandate that the plan develops that requires additional growth come to this area that would not occur under the no-action alternative. There is significant additional growth mandated by this plan. The city's final environmental analysis confirms what we've been saying all along. The plan is going to make traffic worse in an area already collapsing under the pressure of existing traffic. The FEIS explains that even with all of the transportation mitigation projects proposed as part of the sub area plan, even with all of them, the most significant intersections, including the main entrance to the park, all fail. They fail. The drafts said the traffic will be better than the no-action. That has been updated as part of the final EIS and these intersections now are shown to fail. With limited time, I'll mention just a few of the most significant concerns of the business park. The city's apparent desire for regional growth is coming at a huge cost to the park and our road network, which is privately owned. The city's sub area plan, Wash.Express Toll Lane and Sound Transit Bus Base each intentionally redirect and grow growth traffic within the park, but there's been no coordinated effort among the agencies, either through the environmental review process or actual planning, to determine how the private road network within the park can support the agency's collective growth plans. Because the roads are privately owned, what each is actually advocating is unlawful trespassing. So far, the city has no viable plan for dedication of the roads in Canyon Park. Instead, instead, the city's conditions for dedicating the fine roads as public right-of-way require the owners to pick up the cost of upgrading the roads to support future growth. This is a cost we cannot shoulder. I appreciate I'm short on time. I also appreciate we've been trying desperately to talk with you about this very significant concern and this is our only opportunity. Even if the city and the owners association could reach agreement on dedication, the sub area plan proposes a redesign of the roads that don't, that create more unresolved conflicts. The proposed road profiles don't fit within the available right-of-way and violate the park's longstanding CCNRs. It's inexplicable to me frankly, how the city is ignoring the legitimate and well-documented concerns of the majority of the owners within the park. And it's difficult for me candidly to sit here and hear our comments so mischaracterized. We believe that this plan can be salvaged. It just can't be salvaged tonight. More work is needed with the owners to develop a plan that will both address our transportation concerns and achieves the city's goals. We urge you on behalf of the dozens of owners in the park not to approve this plan and instead to direct staff to revisit the issues. The only property owner who has expressed support for this plan is one who is expressly being exempted from it. They've expressed their, their support because you are not going to require them to be subject.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Consideration. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? If so, please your raise, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom and we will call on you.
I'm not showing any others, Mayor Olson.
All right. Thank you and we will move on to any questions that council may have. Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Director Katterman for the amazingly hard work your team has done over the last four years. This was high on the agenda for council when I first got on. I am under the impression that it's been really clear that we have to meet regional growth center designation and increase density in order to keep that designation, which if I'm not mistaken, makes us eligible for transportation grants. Am I incorrect in any of those statements?
Just to elaborate on the last statement, it, it improves our competitiveness for those transportation grants. Yes.
There are certain grants that we can't go after, right? If we don't have a regional growth center designation.
I'm not familiar enough with the grant program, PSRC, to answer that question. I don't know if either Eddie or Sherman might be able to answer that.
The Grant Master.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Absolutely, the, the way federal grants and state grants are moving forward is that you have to meet certain criteria. So certainly a growth centers, an urban growth centers in the PSRC rises up to that level where you are eligible to compete. So that's the, a major, you know, focus on limited resources that are coming from the federal government.
And I, having served on the Transportation Policy Board at PSRC and, and voted on those grants, it sure seems to me that we would want to keep that designation so that we would have some control over mitigating trafficked, traffic issues that come up. It's either we allow traffic and density to happen organically or we choose to find a way to try to direct it and plan for it. So it seems to me that it's better to plan than to close your eyes and hope that things work out okay. So it seems like we have a very good reason and I was there when we almost lost that regional growth center designation and I can tell you, we were, we were all very panicked about that. So the other question I had was regarding the Regional Growth Center and kind of narrowing it down and, and that is that, that's, does that have approval from PSRC yet or does that? I'm not familiar with the process. So do we need to submit it once, once we approve this plan or how does that work in terms of changing the, the perimeter or the site for the Regional Growth Center?
We will have to submit the plan for recertification by Pugilist Sound Regional Council. We have been coordinating with them and in discussions with them, particularly about the boundary and changing the, the the size of the Regional Growth Center. We're within the bounds of the criteria that they set. So we're okay there, but it is somewhat irregular. But when we spoke with staff at PSRC and explained our reasoning for that, they were okay with that. We did receive a letter from PSRC when we put out the draft plan and the, the only thing they noted was that we did not have targets for mode split and we've since added that to the plan.
I have a couple more comments. So I, I guess I'm not understanding why the owners, one of their main problems is that we're going to get BRT there. Isn't that supposed to help with traffic? Why, I'm, I'm just not quite sure. Do you, have they offered other solutions to the traffic issues? Cause it seems like the ones that we're offering and the reason it, it seems counterintuitive that we wouldn't want transit there when there's a problem with traffic. And we would want housing so people can live there and not have to commute there. So I'm really struggling with what they're asking for in terms of traffic mitigation.
And I'll, I'll give a partial answer to that and I'll defer to our transportation experts to, to respond to the rest of that in terms of what other mitigation has been looked at and what, what, if, if any, has been proposed. In terms of, we, we've looked at this holistically in terms of the, the transportation issues in this area because we really had to. As we looked at the different land use alternatives, including the no-action alternative, which is keep the, the, the plan as it is now, we were not able to maintain a level of service, our current level of service, which I would note is not for individual intersections on Bothell Everett Highway. It's for the entire corridor of the Bothell Everett Highway. So individual intersections may hit a level of service F, but the overall level of service that we have to retain, have to maintain there is a level of service E. And we were able to, to find a land use mix that met the criteria for the, the activity units or the number of people per acre in the Regional Growth Center and still maintain that level of service E with the mitigation that's proposed in the plan. So, and I believe the, one of the concerns that we heard this evening and in the past from some of the owners in the business park has to do with the, the Express Toll Lane ramp, the, the dedicated ramp that will come on to Southeast Seventeenth. And I know that we have looked at that. We've been coordinating with, with Washed Out on that as well. But I will defer to Eddie or maybe Carmen Kwan from Fair and Peers if they want to address that in a little bit more detail.
I'll, I'll take a stab at it and, and consultant Carmen could add to that. Absolutely. The first part is that the The first part is that the fact that we are in the perfect location for high capacity transit, which is basically the express, I mean, the, the BRT or the 405 BRT and also the community transit swift line BRT. So this is a perfect location where, you know, land use and transportation will capitalize on those high capacity BRTs. So in terms of the express toll lane and all that, that's another level of added access to those facilities. So in terms of the congestion and the level of service, I think Carmen can talk a little bit about how, you know, how we meet our own level of service and also ensure that we capitalize on, again, the opportunity to, you know, leverage a lot of the regional funding as we talked about this really has a lot of regional traffic here. So the fact that this becomes, you know, growth centers, that's the federal funds and the state funds will then be available to cities like Bothell to access those, which otherwise will have no funding capacity to deal with the regional traffic too. So that's an important piece. Carmen, do you have anything else to add on the congestion part of the level service?
Yeah, there were just two things I wanted to add. It seemed like there was a comment about considering the traffic and congestion from the I-405 express toll lanes. And I just wanted to add that in our traffic analysis for all the no action and action alternatives, we did consider both new land use growth proposed for Canyon Park as well as opening of the I-405 direct tolling ramps. And then the other thing I wanted to share was, I think there was a question about some of the other mitigation strategies that we had identified for Canyon Park to ensure that this preferred alternative was meeting some of the level of service standards that had been identified. And along with the transportation improvement projects, we do identify a transportation demand management program to be implemented within the subarea to help advertise and encourage people to use other modes of travel within and around Canyon Park. And part of that is encouraging transit usage as well as improving the pedestrian and bicycle environment.
Can I ask another question in that? That would be, are there currently shuttles that run from the park and ride, the Canyon Park park and ride through the, through the park? Have the business owners provided any solutions such as a shuttle?
There is a private shuttle within the Canyon Park. I believe it's Seattle Genetics. There might be a couple other companies that have gotten together on that shuttle program, but it does circulate throughout the business park between the park and ride and the, the businesses that people need to get to, to go to work. And that is also something that we've highlighted in the subarea plan, which is to identify improved first mile, last mile connections between the transit center and places of employment.
So that BRT ramp, the express toll lane ramp, which will be supporting the Bus Rapid Transit Line along 405, will be serviced by those shuttles and they could expand those shuttles to solve part of the traffic problem.
Yes. So those shuttle systems, they'd be circulating around the Canyon Park and the park and ride would be one of those stops that it would serve to pick up people and drop them off.
Great. Thank you so much. I, I I'll be supporting this very long, long process. I have ultimate faith in the staff. I, we've gotten regular updates. I feel like you've done your due diligence. We have very good reasons for the decisions we made. I trust the planning commission. And I, I just think this is, this is the, the best way to go. We're, we're talking about creating not just a business park, but an area where people live and have amenities. And that should cut down on traffic because people can live, work, play and eat and get their groceries and in this kind of environment versus driving in and out of a business park. And so I think it's a really great solution and I applaud everyone's involvement. I think it's been a really great process and I look forward to seeing the plan come to fruition. So thank you, everybody.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. I just have a, a few questions. And I guess I'm not exactly sure what the impact our workers have had in our area. Where, what we're seeing in other areas is some of these big companies are not having their workers come into work and they may not come back to the buildings for work. There might be a different, a difference in how people are, and where they work. So have we had any discussion of that or do you have any feeling toward that? How it would impact the plan that we have?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember McAuliffe. It, it is a, it's a good question and it's one that we have discussed among the staff and the consultant team. And we've got a little bit of anecdotal information, but at this point, it's really difficult to model anything because we don't know what the, what the future behavior is going to be. We have, we did make some modifications in terms of retail space, for example. We loosened up some of the, the typical requirements to not necessarily require retail, but some other type of use on those areas where we're looking for that pedestrian storefront activity to be a little more open-ended in terms of the types of uses that could go in there, recognizing the retail sector is, is not necessarily going to come back quickly. As far as employee commuting, I don't know what the percentage is, but a lot of the companies out there have laboratory space and not all of that work can be done remotely. So it's not traditional, traditional tech work or, or traditional office work. I suspect there will be some changes in transportation patterns, but for our purposes, I think we're, we really modeled it more on, on the traditional, more of a worst case, if you will, that may not be the right term, but what, what we would typically anticipate for, for growth and employment in that area. I hope that
Yes, I appreciate that, Michael, because I do think, as you said, typically with labs and with, you know, the kind of businesses that are there in the center today, medical pieces, the high-tech pieces that, that they do not work from home. And there's probably some facts about that as well. But I, but I have been concerned because big companies are really challenging our cities where they build hubs around those businesses and people are not going to work anymore. And so that may go on and it may not. We don't know.
I would add that based on the conversations that, that we've had with a lot of the employers out there, particularly the, the biotech and the medical device employers, one of the things that we've heard repeatedly, and I think Jeannie Ash can, can support this as well in her discussions, is they're looking, what they're looking for is more lab space. It's not necessarily traditional office space, but they're looking to expand with more lab space. And, and I don't think that has, has changed or will change. So we want to make sure that we're preserving those types of, of opportunities for those uses as well.
And I appreciate that. Thank you for that. And one other question that I have is, it was only because Molly said, Molly, where are you? Okay, Molly Lawrence said that the private roads are owned privately. Is there any issues with the fact that, that we, that they have some rights?
Yes, that does create some challenges in terms of, of development and the use of those roads. And we've tried to recognize that through the plan. There are some areas frankly, that we're going to have to continue conversations with them where there may be some conflicts between the CCNRs and with the, some of the provisions in the code that will have to work out. I, I would also point out that some of those conflicts have existed already. We've, I think we've resolved some and we've probably created some additional ones. And, and we've had some discussions with Ms. Lawrence about that and, and we'll continue to have those discussions and work through those, particularly as we get projects in the door. The other thing that I've noted that I didn't bring up tonight, but I want to emphasize is this is a 20-year plan. It's, it's, it's going to take a while for us to start to realize all of this. And it's also going to change over time. The plan will change over time to accommodate the changes that happen in the marketplace and the types of employment that we see out there and in the demands. One of the most important things that we did as far as the land use mix in this area in allowing residential is restricting the residential mostly along the highway and in those nodes at the north and south ends. And one of the key reasons for that, I didn't point it out on the map, but there is an area that's in the middle of the park that is townhouse development. There's brand new townhomes that have just been developed and they were developed under the RAC zone. And we, and that's property that could have gone towards employment and it put residential in an area that probably is not ideal for residential. So we tried to be very deliberate with the, the, the land use mix and the location of the land uses as well. But there are still some conflicts with the CCNRs and we'll have to deal with those.
And, and I think that point that it is a 20-year plan and that you will be managing that over time and can adjust it as needed. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
I appreciate that and I will be supporting it tonight.
Deputy Mayor Lawrence.
Yeah, I can, since I live in the downtown Siberia, I can, I can tell, promise that there will be changes as time goes along. The one thing that I'm impressed with is my memory of how the down, the timeframe that this downtown Siberia plan took shape, you put a lot more time in on Canyon Park. And I think that's, you know, credit to the leadership that we have in the city of Bothell now, taking their, taking their time to be thoughtful about this. I do have a question because it looks to me as I, you know, I'm not an expert nor a prognosticator, but it looks like the first immediate development that we're going to be having that's big for that area is going to be all sound transit related. Is that, would that be a correct assessment?
Wrong mute.
Yep. You would think after all these months, I would know, but I'm still learning. Actually, there are several projects. There's the Sound Transit Project. There's the Wash Dot Project, the ETL, Express Toll Lane. There's the, the Bus Rapid Transit that Sound Transit also doing. And then in terms of private development, we have the project that Juno Therapeutics spoke about this evening. That is, if I recall correctly, it's about a 65,000 square foot office building that's on their existing site. So those are, those are some that are already in the works. And then we also have had inquiries about some other residential developments on the TIAA property. 300 to, to 300 plus units on that site as well.
Okay.
If I could just add one thing, and I meant to bring this up earlier and I apologize.
Apologize, you're fine.
I mentioned, I did mention earlier that we've already hit our five, in five years, we hit our 20-year job growth for that subarea. All of that was done without any new buildings. So what we're seeing is a lot of intensification of the buildings that are there. And we see quite a bit of tenant improvement work that's done in the, particularly in the biotech businesses out there.
Well, props to them for that, utilizing the space that they have and, and maximizing their manpower. That's, that's, that's a feather in their cap. I attended some of the community meetings and watched some planning commission. And I was glad to hear from Canyon Hills Community Church because they hosted some of those meetings. And, and I have wondered how Seventeenth would impact them. Putting, putting this plan in place, my gut says that we can be more proactive and advocating for those. Well, the church isn't a business, but for those, those working neighbors, for lack of a better word, we can advocate for them better, knowing what's coming down the pipeline for them. That's just my gut feeling on that. I also wanted to thank Planning Commission. I think I needed to do a shout out to David Fleet for his leadership over the years and sharing Planning Commission and Kevin, Kevin, you, you're doing a phenomenal job too. Please thank the rest of Planning Commission for us. I know that's been tough. And then, you know, big shout out to Bruce Blackburn and then our staff, the rest of our staff, you, you Mike and the, and the consultants. I, I, I do share concerns of traffic, but as I look at if we do nothing because growth is going to happen versus putting these plans into shape, into place, it doesn't, we don't have the improvements that I would like to see, but then again, we don't have the magic wand that makes all traffic, you know, smooth sailing. I think a, a one of our, one of our Bothell citizens said that they're expecting cars that are driverless that will be zipping up and down 527. And I don't know if I will be alive to see that, but I'm sure that's another piece in the player along 527. But with the changes that are there, my gut reaction, you were talking about going from level F to level E, is that there are some slight, that there, that we're, we're making traffic more stable with some improvements and that's better than what we've got going on now. That's, that's just my opinion. The things that I saw in this that I really like about this plan is, well, one, as you were explaining it, I, I was like, we're creating a think tank community up there. And that, that was in a think tank in a way that's very more, that's dynamic and has a sense of community to it. And I, I really enjoyed that vision as you were sharing it. I love the idea of fostering startup businesses and for small businesses. That's a piece of this plan, isn't? Didn't I, did I understand that correctly? And then, you know, I had asked you about protecting the surrounding areas that sit around around this subarea. And it looks like you're, you're, you're taking lessons that we've learned from the rest of Bothell and applying it to those areas. Also really important that I saw was protection of fragile, sensitive and critical areas. I think you had made a mention about wildlife in the area. Is that the beavers that I, is it, are there some resident beavers around there?
Yes.
Okay. They need to be named. And then I also really appreciated the affordable housing piece that is for more middle income earners. They're kind of our forgotten population that, that really needs some helps and, and, and I appreciated seeing, seeing that in the planning. So and, and as you said, this is not the final, final piece. We're not going to put a, put a seal on it that there's going to be some things added to it and there's going to be adjustments on the way. So seeing the important things, boxes that I have that you've checked off, I, I'm going to approve this as well. So thank you again, everyone.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Director Katterman for your presentation and for all of your work on this as well as Kevin and the whole Planning Commission and all of staff that I know has been just, just really working hard on trying to get this right over years. I, you know, obviously heard a lot of the people that spoke tonight as well as the people that have emailed us with public comment and it seems like traffic is everybody's number one concern, which I understand. If I remember right, a couple of meetings ago when we discussed this, we looked at the no action alternative compared to the plan and this actually made traffic better than the no action alternative. Is, am I remembering that correctly?
I'll ask Carmen to correct me if I get this wrong, but I believe the slide that we showed you a couple of weeks ago showed in the no action that the corridor level of service on the Bothell Everett Highway would go to F. And with the mitigation that we're proposing, we would be able to maintain that at the level E.
Okay. Because traffic has gotten worse despite the fact that we have not done this plan over the last, you know, call it 15 years. And we would expect traffic to continue to get a lot worse if we did nothing here, right?
Yes.
Got it. The, you know, as I look at the planned action The, um, you know, as I look at the planned action ordinance and the things that we are doing in the transportation demand management section of it. Um, I just had a couple of questions about that. Are those? Uh, is this list of items here, do they have to do all of those things in order to be able to use our planned action ordinance? Or is it a, we're submitting, we're doing some sort of these things and you have to meet a certain level?
So I'm going to ask Lisa Greeter from Burke Consulting to respond to that. Lisa is the primary author on the planned action and our resident expert on, on our environmental process. Lisa.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Thompson, it, um, all applicable mitigation would apply to a proposal.
Okay. I mean, thank you. Um, I mean, as I look at this and I see applicable to business fully subsidized transit passes for employees. Or residents of the development, if there's an apartment complex in there, I assume that's what that means. Um, you know, more on demand, first, last mile ride share to transit. I see a ton of transportation mitigation in here. Um, and, and I guess I'm, I'm confused because a lot of our public comment has said that there hasn't been that and like I see a lot of transportation mitigation. And I also see, uh, actual vehicle traffic getting better than the no action alternative. I, um, love secure bike parking in there along with showers and lockers, um, as well as the, um. You know, bike share for people getting around as well. I think just that first mile, last mile transit that has gone into the planned action ordinance is great. You know, that can really leverage the big investments that we've seen with the green line coming down from Swift with stride coming up on 405. I mean, this, this makes a lot of sense to me. Um. I have a list. Let me look at it here. Um, it looks like we have worked in a way so that current projects can be grandfathered in so they can continue. Uh, we had one speaker talk about that. It seemed like his, uh. Like. That's okay. Okay. I got a couple nods there. I'll take it. Um. And really just my last part isn't really a question so much as an acknowledgement that I, I appreciate the fact that we are moving in a direction that. We're gonna have to go. Um, like you mentioned earlier, this is a 20 year plan and this built environment is going to exist for decades beyond that. Like we, the last thing we need to do is continue to operate under a 20th century transportation paradigm. And this starts to move us in the direction that we are gonna have to go. Um, and I appreciate that very much. You know, when I, um. Talk to residents up in that area, you know, you hear about traffic a lot. Um, and. Moving in a direction where people use single occupancy vehicles less is a paradigm shift and it's difficult for people to understand, but it is something that we absolutely have to do. And we started to see those big investments come in and I see this as something that's well thought out. I will, I will also be supporting this tonight. And. I could rant on a little longer, but. Nobody needs to hear that. Um, just know that I appreciate the work you've done and I'm, I'm happy in the direction this has gone.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to say, I think this is a first for me that, uh, to kind of sit back and listen to the conversation. Um, and feel like, um, every single question I was going to have was answered. So I want to thank all the council members for having this robust, um, conversation because it really sets the stage for. Uh, the amount of work that's gone into this, um, Regional Growth Center. Um, not only locally here in Bothell and all the hard work the staff's done, the Planning Commission. Um, but the work that we do regionally. I, I did have a question. How, how many regional growth centers? Um, like this do we have in our region? Does anybody, does anybody know the answer to that?
Twenty-nine.
How many? I'm sorry?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
In the four county region and there are three in Snohomish County.
Okay, so three, only three in Snohomish County. Um, so we have, um, something, um. That is available to us for grant funding, transportation, infrastructure dollars that not a lot of cities have available to them. And I feel like, um, the PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Council. Um, Councilmember Doer alluded to this earlier, her being on the Transportation Policy Board. Um, a lot of work has gone into this over the past four years and, and even to keep our designation as a Regional Growth Center. Um, uh. Eddie spoke a little earlier about the, the, the opportunities for grants and funding, transportation grants and funding. Not every city has those opportunities and we have those opportunities. And I feel if, if we don't, um, if we don't maintain our designation as a growth center. Um, Councilmember Thompson brought up the, the fact that the, the, the traffic is going to be there regardless of what we do. So. It's better to have the availability of the funds to the city so that we're not putting. The impacts of the traffic and transportation issues in that area, um, on the citizens of Bothell. Um, rather to, you know, our job is to go out and be able to get dollars and bring those back into our community. And I, and I feel that, that we are doing that with this plan. Um, to talk about this plan being perfect, no, no plan is perfect. Um, but like you said, there's, this is a 20 year plan. So who, who knows what transportation is going to look like five years from now, 10 years from now? Um, de- depending on how we come out of this pandemic, things could look completely different. And we may be looking at different opportunities and, and options available to us. But, but for me, I think this, just this conversation tonight. Um, has, has showed me that, that everybody is keen. Um, on what this Regional Growth Center means to our community in perpetuity. Uh, for 2050 and beyond. It's not, it's not about today. It's not about, you know, 10 years from now, 20, it's about 50 to 100 what we're going to leave our, our kids. You, you looked at the environment. Uh, which is hugely important, uh, first and last mile, uh, which is important. Um, so I, I think I, I will be supporting, uh, this motion and I will be supporting it because I feel that it's. It's, it's moving us in the right direction. Um, it's keeping us in line with the opportunities that we need to connect our downtown, which was. Um, our first big plan. Now we have our, uh, uptown, we'll call it our north end. Plan and, and hopefully we can see the connections, uh, between our downtown and our, and our uptown. Um, in the, in the future, um, so that the residents can, can travel back and forth in, um, on a corridor. Um, that meets an E rating versus an F rating. So I want to thank you all for all your hard work. Um, I, I was reading, you know, 14. Meetings, 200, the, the certain amount of surveys that have gone out. I mean, that is a, that's a load and, um, you guys have steadfast with it. Uh, you stayed in with PSRC to ensure that we continue to have, um, our designation, uh, and I think that is a huge advantage for our community. So I want to thank you all so much for all your hard work on it.
Councilmember Agnew.
Uh, I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work and Bruce, I know you're listening. Thank you. Uh, it seemed the biggest complaint people had was traffic and understandably so. But by doing nothing, we make it worse. So, uh, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense not to support this plan and try to improve the per- traffic and keep our Regional Growth Center. Uh, I will be supporting this motion.
All right, Mike, thank you for your staff and Kevin, thank you for the Planning Commission and all the work they have done. Um. You know, the, the listing of, of the meetings and the community outreach and the surveys, uh, you know, is quite impressive, you know. Four plus years of work into this, um. You know, I, I definitely believe that staff, uh, and the community has put the time and effort into this, uh. As everyone is saying, this is, is a important, uh, piece of the puzzle, uh, Snohomish County. Um, you know, we're straddling or we're, our city straddles the county line. We're in two counties. Uh, this really puts a lot more emphasis. Into Snohomish County, uh, there's so much growth up there and. Really taking the time to make this plan i- is crucial. And I think we've really done a great job with this plan. So I, I too will be in support of this. Councilmember Doer.
I motion to adopt attachment two and ordinance adopting the Canyon Park Subarea Plan and related Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan Amendments.
I can.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Doer, uh. For the recommended action, uh, uh, second by Councilmember McAuliffe. Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none. City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Councilmember Doer. On mute.
I motion to adopt attachment three and ordinance replacing chapter 12.48. Of the Bothell Municipal Code Canyon Park Subarea Development Regulations and amending other related sections of the Bothell Municipal Code.
Councilmember McNeil.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Doer for the, uh, recommended action for attachment three, a second by Councilmember McNeil. Any discussion on this item? Councilmember Thompson.
I just want to say, and I didn't know where to put this in, I really appreciate the fact that we've moved to yes and no rather than yay and nay. So Laura, thank you. I love it. Um. Way to go.
Thank you. I couldn't, I couldn't tell the difference either. So there you go.
Councilmember Doer.
I just wanted to mention because I don't know which specific of these recommend actions it falls under, but I, I had as a legislator conversations with, um. Businesses up there that didn't think we went far enough because they wanted to expand more. So we may not have heard from them tonight, but there is definitely an appetite for growing density up there. So.
All right, seeing no further discussion. City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right, get the trifecta. Councilmember Doer.
I motion to adopt attachment four of the Canyon Park Planned Action Ordinance.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Doer to, uh, the, for the, uh, recommended action for attachment four with a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none. City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you, everyone. That was, uh, quite an achievement. I, I want to reiterate my thanks to the Planning Commission and, uh, community development and all the other staff and. Consultants that have come out tonight to assist us with, uh, this decision and, uh. You know, making it straightforward and easy.
Thank you all very much.
All right, our last item of the evening is our council conversations. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to bring to our attention, um, that our superintendent from North Shore School District, Michelle Reed. Has been chosen as Superintendent of the Year by school administrators. Her diligent vigilance during the pandemic to close down schools early, protect our students and their families. Was very, was very much appreciated and, um, I think that she is diligently now continuing to work with our young people. Because they are having issues during this pandemic. Um, I serve on the North Shore School Foundation Youth Advisory Council, which has students from our high schools. And what we're hearing and what our superintendent is hearing is the mental health of our young people is at, at, is at risk. And it's very, it's a very large problem for them. I just wanted to share with you what other cities and schools are doing and what I'm. Somewhat working on hoping to get some accomplishments here. Some of the cities and schools are opening their parks and their play fields or their fields. So that students can come out and recreate, but they do it with caution. They have rules, they have masks, they have distances. And I'm really looking into this because I think from what I hear from our young people. They really need our support and they need us to help them during these difficult times. So thank you. And if you have anything you want to share with me on this, I'd be happy to hear from you because I know you all have children as well. And I will tell you that I have a grandchild. She is 12 years old. She's a very bright girl, strong family support. Always ahead of everything, loves to read and struggled with school because at home it's a different program than what she's used to and. Her mother is considering getting a tutor. So we know that, uh, many of our children need our support. So in any way that we can. I'd love to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I wasn't sure that you saw that. Um, well, I have two thoughts, but yeah, uh, and I can save my second thought for later. Um, I just wanted to respond to, uh, what Councilmember McAuliffe was saying. Uh, the mayor and I were in a meeting with, um. Our city manager and I think, um, our city manager was there on campus. It was right after, right when COVID was hitting. And, um, I have never seen our city manager afraid. Um, and as COVID was reading, you know, realizing the impact of what COVID would be. And it was her conversation that I think that she had with, uh, our superintendent and those, those two women. Um. Uh, took, took the banner, took the leadership here on the city level and on the district level. Of alerting us and becoming really proactive in how to protect our community because we were essentially sitting right next to ground zero, right? So, um, that is something that I, that I have been very appreciative is both of those two, both of those two women in their spheres. Getting right on top of it, not. Taking advisement, but also being proactive and not waiting for solutions to be spoon fed to them. They were figuring it out. And so both our superintendent and city managers should ha- have props for the way we first addressed COVID.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, I have something completely different. If somebody else wants to, you know, talk about the, uh, impact of the mental health for the kids, I'll back out for a while.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with, uh, Councilmember McAuliffe on the fields. First and foremost, ju- just want to thank the city for the, the hard work and dedication the Parks Department's had. Keeping the Wayne Golf Course and, or Wayne Park, whatever we want to call it right now. Open to the public to just have people go out and recreate and be able to social distance. The sports field thing is, is something that obviously kids need to get out and they need to be active. Um, and while you can't have group settings or teams getting together right now. Uh, having kids be able to go out and throw the ball. I won't be throwing a ball for anytime soon, but having kids being able to go out and do that is important. Um, and I think if we could find a way for our school districts to, to open up their fields, it would give more opportunity to more, uh, to more kids to be able to get out and be active. While social distancing, but just having the, the Wayne, uh, open to the public, uh, uh, is huge. I see kid, people out there throwing frisbees, throwing the ball around, walking their dogs. I mean, it is just amazing. How many people are out there? So, so hats off to the, to the Parks Department for allowing that to continue happening.
Councilmember Doer.
Well, I would say this winter brings new meaning to the, uh, phrase cabin fever. I, there are whole days that go by and I realize I haven't gone. There are whole days that go by and I realize I haven't gone outside, so I go get the mail. Thanks for bringing up the mental health issue, councilmember McAuliffe, I have a sixteen year old and this is the time in their life when they're supposed to be learning how to socialize and how to interact with other people and, you know, do group projects and interact with adults. And I, I feel like many of the adults have failed their generation at this point, and it's, it's really sad. And I don't know what the long term impacts will be, but I'm, I'm definitely concerned. So anything that you can think of that we can do is great, I, you know, I do my thing at home and try to get her outside and but yeah, we're all kind of stuck right now, not really knowing what to do, even, you know, adults are struggling, I can't imagine what, what a kid who hasn't developed coping mechanisms is really capable of identifying, you know, what they can do or how to solve their problems, so. Anyway, I applaud your bringing it up, thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but I do want you to know that when I was in the legislature, we adopted a amendment, we adopted a law that said no child left inside, and it was outdoor education. And we actually had a lot of support for people to develop these outdoor education programs. And so I'm working a little bit toward that, I think they can social distance and still get educated and scientific affairs and plants and, and all kinds of environmental issues as well. So hopefully we can find some ways between, with our advisory council, our youth advisory council, thank you all though.
Can I just say one thing I brought up with Superintendent Reed? You know, we don't, we don't have a lot of sports programs going on, but coaches are still interacting with the kids, and I, I think it would be helpful even to just have coaches give them workouts or, or, you know, assignments or things to do to have goals or watch certain videos, or I, I, I think something that gives them a connection back to school and their sports and where they're not losing skills and not losing, you know, the physical fitness aspect because that's such an important part of mental health, right, is moving. And so that's, I don't know what you can do with that suggestion, but I, I think it would be helpful.
Councilmember Thompson.
Just kind of adding on to that, you know, our kids are doing all sorts of different activities, a lot of the places that do that have moved to Zoom. So like, you know, my oldest had gymnastics earlier today and we set up a mat in the downstairs and everybody's on Zoom talking to each other, and she's doing a workout. So like, there, there are some pretty cool things that have kind of come up through that. I, I don't know if any of those are officially through the school district or not, but there's, we're adapting in some ways. And I, and councilmember Doer, I'm gonna need you to talk to you about those like coping mechanism things like that, that sounds neat, I could use some help.
Chocolate, a lot of chocolate.
Lacy will appreciate that.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I'd like to shift gears if I can ever so, well, ever so, no, just shift gears, get on a different track and I'll try not.
Remember our deputy mayor Zornz? Tom was gonna change, Tom was gonna change topics, but we, we, we went back to the mental health, so I just want to.
But I, but I also said I had a second thing, but I will refer to Tom because Tom's probably gonna be more short than I am. I mean.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I, I brought it up last week, I'm gonna bring it up this week again, about one percent for art for private development. I think it's something that we need to think about, our city's growing. We need to have some money for the arts, and I would like to get three other council members to agree with me so we can take it and have the city staff come up with something for us.
I'm in.
Me too.
I'm in for having the conversation.
Thank you.
All right, back to you Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yeah, he's definitely more brief than I'm going to be. Thank you, thank you, councilmember Agnew, it's a good idea, it's a great idea. In fact, I, I will be noodling it all during our break, that's how much I like that idea. I, I'm gonna, I'm going to preface this with a lot. So for you who just want me to cut to the chase, like some of the members of my family, I'm not going to do that, and I'm apologizing now, I've got to set the stage. So when we were talking about the budget, my, my husband was on city council from, this is, I'm gonna tell you how, give you an idea of how old we are. Eighty-eight to ninety-two. And I was talking about some of my ponderings with, with the budget, and he said, well, what's your finance, who's on your finance committee? And I said, we don't have a finance committee, and that's when the poop hit the fan, and he said, what? Back in my day, we had a standing meeting every week, I met with the finance director. And so I did some diving into what's, what is the history of our own finance committees? And we, we had had one for quite a while. And then my impression that I got from some of the old council members is that it became kind of insular. And the rest of council didn't feel like they were part of the discussion, and so it, it kind of faded away. I did talk to another council, I looked to see other municipalities who have a finance committee, and they, and they do exist in other cities. The, the budget is our policy document, it's the, it's the one document that we have that council has oversight on. I will, let me tell you about Linwood. Linwood has three of their council members meet with their finance department monthly. And what I understand what they did with COVID was they opened it up and it and for staff who's eavesdropping, don't, don't panic, I'm, I'm, my, where I'm going with this is much dialed down. But what they, but what Linwood did over most of COVID was they met weekly and they opened it up to all of council, most of council didn't show up, but all of council and the community was involved in, in where their finances were going. I talked with the city manager and given the situation of where our staff is, if I'm recalling correctly, she thought that was a big lift. However, we are asked to approve vouchers every month, which is great, and props to staff for putting descriptors on what those vouchers are, I noticed on this last listing, it was, it was really, I don't know how they chose their words, but it was very clear what the money was going for on the vouchers, I really appreciated it. However, as council, we ought to be knowing where our, where our funds are, are falling every month. But if we're authorizing vouchers, we ought to know if for the, the month we're in the hole or if we're ahead. I mean, we have reap money, we have retail revenues coming in, we have property tax, impact fees, who knows where, you know, how, in lieu fees, some people care about bond debt ratio, that, that's kind of out of my my expertise, if I can use that word very broadly. But I want to know if council, when we get our vouchers every month, we also know where we're following, falling in, are we ahead, are we behind? Maybe we want to look at for the last three, three months combined, are we ahead or behind, you know? Just keep moving along this month and two months before, how is it averaging out? But I feel like we really ought to be knowing, especially where, where our, our budget is so tightly situated right now, we really ought to be knowing how, how our funding is coming in and if we're falling short or if we're meeting our expectations with our vouchers. And I'm curious to know if rest of council would like that in our packet. And it just has to be a brief, brief synopsis, it doesn't have to be big and detailed. There are a lot of crickets, nobody cares.
Oh, if it's not too much work for staff, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think more clarity is always good, it's just question of just time resources. I also like the idea of a finance committee. I know a lot of other councils do various different types of committees, and I think it would be a good thing for those of us that are interested in going a little bit deeper just to do that.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I really agree with the direction you're all going, but I'm very concerned about the staffing level that we want you to devote, that will have to be devoted to this, so I'd like to have the conversation continue and have a conversation with our city manager.
They should have those numbers current, I mean, we, we've got an excellent finance department and they should be able to know pretty much where we're falling on how the books are, are balancing out.
A report you're looking for, or?
Just, just an update, where, 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 where are we, are we falling short or are we, are we ahead with what's, is our? Are we still outspending or are we, or do we have, I, I hate using the word revenue, but that's the word that we use. Do we have enough revenue coming in to keep? Because if we start to see that gap where we're still spending and that gap stays in place, that's good information for us to have. We ought to be tracking i- if that gap continues or if it gets closer, if it gets better. We ought to be able to track that so that when we have our quarterly updates and we're going to have a big discussion at the end of this year, we're, we're going to know what the years looked like.
I'd be, I'd be, I'd like to have a discussion to understand what staff and resources would be needed to do something like that. Obviously, the more information is better for us, but I, I think that, you know, if you go through each one of the vouchers and understand the voucher, but if you're looking for a report that just says where we stand with the vouchers, that might, that might be a different conversation, but a finance committee to me, I'm not sure what Linwood's budget is and, and what they allocate towards that or other cities for that matter. But, you know, I'd ask, in my next one-on-one with the city manager, I personally will, will ask a few follow-up questions on that.
Yeah, I think I have to noodle on it a little bit more. Because yeah, I, I think sometimes just snapshots in time or, or just those kind of reports are by themselves or without the interpretation, not, not as useful or just because we have some cyclical revenues. And so sometimes I think it'll look like we're a lot worse, and then all of a sudden we look a lot better and so yeah, it's something I think I'll, I'll just have to think a little bit more on, but it's an interesting proposition.
Who's ready for a break? Like a couple weeks?
If I can go one last time. I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank you all for an amazing end to twenty twenty. It's been a difficult years, we, we all discussed on everyone. And this last topic that we just approved unanimously brought back memories of the Fitzgerald area for me, so. But I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-one being better. I'm going to personally continue to stay positive. I'm gonna recover and be better than ever. But I, I, I just, I can't stress it enough, I want to thank each and every one of you for this amazing year, this tough time serving with you guys, so. And city manager, again, for all your efforts, everything that you do each and every day, the one-on-ones with us, giving us the information that we need. Thank you, Laura, keeping us all together, day, day in and day out. I don't see Paul on there, but his quirky little Paulness makes me smile every time, every time I hear from him, so.
You make, you make a mistake, he'll be right there.
Yeah, so I, I just, I just, I'm, I'm reflecting. And, and, and Robin, and I, I'm remiss, I'm gonna miss somebody, so. But I just, I just want to say it's, it's, it's an honor to serve with each and every one of you. I know it's been a rough year, but we've done an amazing job on behalf of our community this year. And I know we will be better next year for it, so I just wanted to say happy holidays to all of you, each and every one of you, the best to you and your families.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to wish everyone a very, very happy and healthy holiday. And we'll all be back in January, but particularly I hope that our city, city of Bothham staff and city manager can take a deep breath and have a few minutes for themselves because they have worked very, very hard. Furloughs have occurred, we laid staff off, this is time for them to take care of themselves and their families. Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
I too would just like to wish everybody a happy holiday and, and stay safe. And as councilmember McNeil said, this, this has been an interesting year to say the least. I've probably been on the dais the longest, and I went through the recession, and that was nothing like what we've experienced this year, city staff has done a wonderful job, the council has done a very good job. I commend all of you, I am proud to work with all of you, and twenty twenty-one has got to be better.
Councilmember Thompson.
Are you guys telling me that this wasn't a normal year? Because this is the only year I've ever known, this is normal for me. And I, I've said once or twice, this wasn't on the brochure.
Councilmember Doer.
I, I just want to echo everyone's comments. It's been a rough year, I've, I've had a rough year on a number of levels, pretty much every level there can be. And I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-one, and I wish everyone all the health and happiness in twenty twenty-one, and my agreed staff, thank you for everything, for being flexible, for making tough choices, Jennifer, and I wish everyone the very best. And some well-deserved rest over the holidays.
Yeah, I'll say just, yeah, please enjoy your time with your families, enjoy the time off, try to recharge those batteries. Happy holidays. I don't know, I'm hoping for a little snow, I know city staff or public works aren't crazy about that idea, but.
Guess we're gonna see you all next year, right?
Yep.
So do I need to make a motion, like, you know, my, the last?
Yes, you need to make the motion.
And Tom needs to second it.
That we begin our holiday break.
Councilmember Agnew.
I second that motion.
All right, all in favor, thumbs up, nods.
Yeah.
All right, everyone.
Be safe.